Good evening, everybody. I will call our regular city council meeting to order be being held via WebEx of October 27th, 2020. If you're able to, I will ask you all to put your cameras on and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Thank you, everyone. Next item on our agenda is the open forum, and I will pass it to Executive Assistant Winn to see if anybody is here for the open forum and to also just review how folks can participate in the open forum.
Thank you, Mayor. I currently do not have anybody on the phone right now for the open forum. Residents are able to call in during our council meetings to comment during the open forum. They can call 612-861-0651. You can also call ahead of time if you'd like to leave comments with me at 612-861-9711. You can also feel free to email me at kwynn@richfieldmn.gov.
We'll just wait a little bit more, just to make sure no one's here. Okay, I'll just ask one more time. Is anyone on the line? Assistant Winn, by chance?
We do not have any callers for the open forum.
Okay. All right. Seeing as we have no callers or no one who has submitted anything for the open forum, I will move to the next item. I'll close the open forum. And the next item is the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of October 13th, 2020.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you. The minutes have been moved by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Executive Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved. And then I'll just make the note that Councilmember Garcia is not, will not be attending our council meeting today. And I believe last time we had a council member missing, we just had to make the note and then we could just continue with the votes for, with the existing council members. So the next item is a presentation of the Chamberlain Award. So I would like to ask Bob Cunningham and Steve Schranki of Inland Developers Development Partners to come and speak a little bit about this exciting award and some news about this Chamberlain Award tonight. Oh, looks like you're on mute, Steve.
How's that?
There we go.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you for letting me know that, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Steve Schranki with Inland Development Partners. And of course, as the mayor mentioned, my partner is also with me, Bob Cunningham. We're very excited. When we, we always like to celebrate our projects, Inland does. And of course, when we have that opportunity to do that, we also like to celebrate with the cities and staff and the policymakers that we've had the real pleasure to work with on those projects. NAIOP is the lead organization, association, so to speak, for developers and investors and owners of commercial real estate. Throughout the United States, there's probably about 20,000 members in NAIOP. And here in Minnesota, there are nearly 900 members. And that's the award, one of the award from that group that we want to present tonight.
So the Minnesota NAIOP chapter, as Steve said, is the preeminent real estate, commercial real estate group in the metropolitan area. Every year, they have an awards of excellence ceremony for both buildings and individuals that are excellent outcomes. We submitted the Chamberlain because we thought that it was an excellent outcome. And as everybody remembers, that's 316 units in six buildings. There is the Award of Excellence. And we submitted the building several months ago, and we were informed last month that the Chamberlain was awarded the NAIOP Suburban Apartment Building of the Year. Some of the reasons that they gave us for being an award winner was that we stitched the project into the community and that it fits so well and it really addressed the needs of the marketplace. The reason that we are in front of you this evening is because frankly, we couldn't have done it without everybody that's on the call, the HRA members, the Planning Commission members, and perhaps most of all the staff, and specifically John and Melissa. They shepherded this thing through a long and winding road for us to be at the completion, which was last September. And so this being a building that was completed in 19 was eligible for the 2020 award. So again, the Suburban Apartment Building of the Year Award. And one of the reasons that they gave is because they thought that the judges thought that this building would be so well received in the marketplace. And happy to announce tonight, has nothing to do with the Award of Excellence, but it is kind of a confirmation that as of Monday yesterday, our leasing staff informed us that we're now 94% leased at the Chamberlain. So 95% is widely kind of regarded as being full. You can't really get any more leases done in a project. So we're at 94%, five to go to get to 95%. So the community, the renters have really accepted the Chamberlain, and we couldn't be more delighted with the outcome and more delighted with our public-private partnership with the city of Richfield. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Are there comments or questions on it from council members? Councilmember Supple, did you put your hand up? Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. First of all, congratulations, and I think this is a very well-deserved reward. And one thing that I think is significant is that for the longest time, it was hard to get development on the east side of the city because there was nothing to compare it to. They kept saying, oh, well, you can't do this because there's nothing to compare it to. There's nothing to compare it to. And you guys finally were the trendsetters that put that together and put it up there. And now it's getting easier to get other development because there's something to compare it to. They can say, oh, we can compare it to the Chamberlain. So thank you for being the trendsetters on that because that made a huge difference. That really helped the east side of Richfield. Thank you.
And we couldn't without the support of the city council, the planning commission, and the HRA. So thank you.
Other comments or questions from council members?
I'll jump in. I'd just like to say, I think that this award is well-deserved. And, and a huge thank you to our staff because I know staff worked so hard on this and spent so many hours and quite a bit of time on working with, with the developers to get this up and going. And on the developer's end, there was a lot of different things that I, that I recognize. So one is how do you build a multi-unit apartment complex so big and have it integrate into the community? And I think you all have done an exceptional job. And that was a great partnership with the staff and the developers and the community in doing so. But then also that it was funded from union pensions and that it was 100% union-built. That was a really big win as well and another way to role model what good, strong development looks like in our community. And it was the first development on the east side since 1971. So again, setting a record there. And then one of the things closest to my heart is the fact that you really worked with the city to say, instead of bulldozing existing, you know, existing affordable housing where families were living, you know, we challenged you and you took us up on the challenge to say, we would like you to keep those buildings, integrate it into your development plan, upgrade them, and keep the affordability. And I was sitting in meetings, bilingual meetings with tenants from those apartments. We had a lot of questions and, and your staff and the managing property staff. And I thought you all did an exceptional job. And it is now an example that we highlight with other policymakers across the state, and I'm sure you all do too, of like, this is what it can look like to preserve and improve existing affordable housing in a city and integrate it into a new development instead of at the expense of losing that, those homes for our families. So I just want to recognize all those other things that, that I noticed along the way. And thank you to, to the developers and to the staff for partnering with us on making all of that happen.
Last comment from the developer is that the image that was put up on the screen, we do have an actual award that we will be giving to the city when we are kind of back to normal and can bring it by City Hall for kind of display anywhere that the city thinks that it might be appropriate.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you, Bob and Steve, for coming and sharing this great news. And that award is well-deserved, and we really are thankful for your partnership on the project. And clearly, our community and our families are benefiting from having the Chamberlain in east Richfield.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Night. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Councilmember Supple, I'll move approval of the agenda.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar, and that will go to City Manager Rodriguez. Looks like you're on mute. Still City Manager. Here we go.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. I'm not hearing you because you're, the screen is freezing. I don't know why. Internet is unstable today, so my apologies.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Not a problem.
Yep. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action is necessary on these items. Item A, consider a resolution amending and restating the I-35W Alliance Solutions Alliance Joint Powers Agreement. Item B, consider the approval of a resolution authorizing the Source Water Protection Plan Implementation Grant Agreement between the city of Richfield and the Minnesota Department of Health. And I present these two items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Councilmember Troutman, second.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been moved by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Are there any council questions or comments on the consent calendar? Councilmember Supple.
I just want to say that I really appreciate seeing all of the stuff about protecting our water because that is a huge asset of Richfield, and it's really, really important that we're protecting it. And I guess later on in the agenda, we're going to be talking more about ways to protect our watershed. So thank you for all the people that have worked on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Other comments or questions from council members? All right. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. The next item, let's see here, the next item goes to Councilmember Troutman. Is that correct?
I guess that's the, the amending and restating the I-35 Solutions Alliance Joint Powers Agreement. I'm sorry to hear that. That's where we're at?
Sorry. Am I seeing, am I, do I have the wrong one up? I have the resolution for the general obligation funds.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong, I'm in the wrong space. We, now that we're virtual, I don't have the tabs to navigate to.
Yep, and it's item number five.
Sorry.
That's okay.
No rush.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So this is a resolution to consider the, or awarding the sale of a $3,255,000 General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2020B. And so in 2012, the city issued the $2,120,000 General Obligation Street Reconstruction Bonds Series 2012A. The 2012A bonds were issued to the, to fund the 76th Street East Reconstruction Project. In 2013, the city issued the $2,770,000 Geo Storm Sewer Bond Series 2013B. The 2013B bonds were issued to fund costs related to the Richfield Parkway. Interstate interest rates continue to be at low levels. And the city's fiscal consultant, Ellers and Associates, Inc., periodically reviews the city's outstanding bond issues to determine which issues, if any, are feasible for refunding. Upon the latest review of the bond issues, Ellers and Associates Incorporated recommends undertaking a bond refunding of the Series A 2012, or the Series 2012A and 2013B to take advantage of the low interest rates and realize interest savings. For the refunding, the savings is estimated to be $245,428. Bids on the 2020B General Obligation Refunding Bonds are due in the offices of Ellers and Associates, Inc. on Tuesday, October 27th, 2020. Representative from Ellers and Associates, we present, are present for the city council meeting, recommend a successful bidder and review the attached documents and provide information that is absent from the resolution and available only after the bidding of the bonds that's closed. Following Ellers and Associates, Inc. recommendation, it would be appropriate for the city council to award the bond sale to qualified buyer and undertake other related actions necessary as delineated in the approving resolution. The anticipation, anticipated closing date for the 2020B bonds is scheduled for November 19th, 2020. So with that, I would move the approval of the attached resolution awarding the sale of General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2020B in their original aggregate principal amount of $3,255,000, fixing their form and specifications, acting their execution and delivery, providing for their providing for the retention and refunded thereby.
Thank you for making the motion, Councilmember Troutman. I'm going to ask if there's Director Regis, or I know we have a representative of Ellers here as well, if they want to add anything before we continue. Director Regis?
Yes, I'd just like to add that the 2013B bonds were issued in conjunction with the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District for a stormwater project over the Taff Lake. And as such, there is an agreement between the city and the watershed district. The bond payments of the bonds and so forth, the watershed district will make the payments on the debt to the city, and then the city will in turn pay the paying agent and things like that. Now, because of this agreement, there was a little bit of a complication. There had to be a minimum threshold for savings on this refunding. And the original sale day report that you received has, has been changed slightly, and you will be eating the new one tomorrow. So I just wanted to point that out, too. We just had to adjust the allocation between the two refunding issues in order to make that work and things like that. And I probably said too much already, so I think I'll turn it over to Rebecca Kurtz. With Ellers and Associates, you could probably do a much better job than me in explaining what's going on.
Thank you, Chris. You did, you did a very nice job. But I will be happy to walk through the results. I do have a PowerPoint kind of that I'm going to share my screen, but it does follow the information of the sale day report, which I do believe was forwarded to you. And I can point out when we get to that point what that, that change is that we'll be making. All right. You guys are seeing both screens here, aren't you?
Yep.
Okay, let me retry that again. I'll try one more time here. My apologies that I am not tracking on how to show my screen on this.
That view is just fine, too.
Okay, I will try this one more time, and if it does not work, my apologies. And I will, I'm seeing my big screen on my, my second, on my second screen, and I'm not able to get that onto my, my laptop. Well, my apologies for not being more tech savvy. But as Mr. Regis presented, we did accept bids in our office today at 10:30 this morning for the refunding of the 2012A and the 2013B bonds. Again, as a reminder, the refunding that we did was purely for interest savings. And so we did not restructure or change the term from the original term for both issues. As in the past, prior to the rating, we did go through a, or prior to the sale, we did go through a bond rating process. The complete copy of the rating report is attached in the sale day report that you received earlier today. But again, congratulations. I've said this to you several times. Standard and Poor's did affirm the city's AA+ rating. Because we were rated not that long ago for the new money for 2020, the rating report is really, has not changed significantly. It still was a rather conservative approach compared to what we maybe had seen in past years. But again, in summary, Standard and Poor's did recognize the city's stable history of positive general fund and operating results. Again, they did footnote that with their conservative approach due to the unknowns related to COVID and the recession, but believe that, that the city is in a great position financially to address these unknowns that we do have before us. They also recognized the very strong management with the capital improvement planning that the city has done, along with other financial planning, as well as the different policies you have in place that are related to the city's finances and management of those finances. They recognize the strong budgetary flexibility and liquidity and recognize that the strong cash balances that you have available for coverage of expenses. And then finally, recognizing that the debt service is 11.4% of expenditures and is considered adequate in their analysis. However, they recognize that 66% of the debt is amortized within 10 years, which is viewed as a positive credit factor for the rating. So again, congratulations. The AA+ rating with a stable outlook really is that testament of the work that staff and council and everyone does to manage where the city is going with its finances and being responsible and thoughtful with the decisions that are being made. So with that, today, we did receive three bids. Northland Securities out of Minneapolis was the low bid. We also did receive bids from Baird and Bach Financial in Milwaukee. With that, you will see that with the bond results, we did have a few changes here. First of all, the final amount of the bond will be $3,110,000, excuse me, $110,000 with the true interest cost of 1.094%. You will recognize possibly that the amount of the bond issue was reduced. We received a premium bid, which meant that there were adequate funds to cover the debt service and refund the two outstanding issues. But we also had additional funds that we were able to reduce the principal amount of bonds. What that results in is a lower principal amount. There will be lower, lower interest costs over time because we have less principal to finance. Getting to the change that Chris did mention at the beginning, again, there were two parts to this refunding. The first one was the $1.37 million of the 2012A or the street reconstruction bonds. For that individual purpose, we received a savings of $101,230, or $101,230,000 in savings, or an average of about $7,787 annually. With that, we, that is a slight change from the report that you do have in front of you. Because as we look at the 2013B bond, the amount of that purpose is $1.74 million with now $136,652 in savings, or an average of about $11,388. In the report that you have, there is a, the savings for the 2013B bond is $5,000 less, and the savings for the A is $5,000 more. After we had completed the sale day report, we were notified by the city's bond council that the watershed had approved a amendment to the agreement. However, they had required a minimum savings of $135,000 to move forward. What we were able to do is just move a denomination of $5,000 from the watershed to the street reconstruction project. It does not impact the savings or any of the other numbers. It really looks just behind the scenes. So really, with the combined savings of the two parts for the bond, we had savings of $237,881 over the outstanding term or a net present value of $7.067. When we had been here about a month ago and presented the estimates, we were estimating about 7.37% in savings. So it is slightly less. What that equates to in dollars is about $7,000, but fairly close to where we had anticipated we would be. With that, I am happy to answer any questions. But when you are ready to take action, we are recommending to adopt the resolution awarding the sale of the new adjusted amount of $3,110,000 of general obligation refunding bonds. Again, that awards the purchase to Northland Securities, which was the low bidder. As Mr. Regis said, we are looking at a closing on November 19th. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions I have.
Thank you so much for that summary. Questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. Finances are, have never been my, my strong suit. Can you help me understand how in one, what you just said about the savings being in one, what you just said about the savings being, um, ever so slightly less than what we were expecting? I mean, that's, it's fine. It's still savings. Um, but I guess I'm confused because the prediction was that we would need to refund 3.2 million? Uh, and I guess I would have thought if we're doing less, that that would have meant we got a low enough interest rate that we needed to bond out for less. So can you help me understand how those two happen simultaneously?
Absolutely. It is, um, there's a lot going on and there's a couple of different pieces that play into that. So, um, with the bid that we received, we received what we call a premium bid. And so in simple terms, that means we received all of the money that was needed to do the refunding of, of the two issues, pay them off in full, but the underwriter gave us additional funds. Um, if you look at the sale or the bid tab sheet, the interest rate in the first couple of years is a little bit higher than it is in the later years. And with that as a way for them to market the bonds, they had a slightly higher interest rate initially, but in kind of an exchange for a little higher interest rate, they gave the city more money than what we needed. And since in this case, we don't have a project that has, you know, construction or way, we don't need additional funds, we could use that then to reduce the bond payment. So that, um, there, there are a couple of things going on. There's the benefit of having the lower bond or par amount of it that is going to help on interest rates or on interest expenses. But then as a separate issue, as you look at the way the interest rates came in, there is the savings that if you compare to what we had estimated, um, from a percent of net, net present value benefit, it is slightly less. Good questions because it is, it's not an easy, easy thing to sort through.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? Um, I just had one. Oh, Councilmember Troutman, did you have a question or comment?
Just a quick comment, and I just wanted to say, um, again, thank you to, to our staff, but particularly to Director Regis, because, uh, we know we can only take advantage of opportunities like this because of our city's excellent rating. And we have that rating because of the foresight that you have, yeah, the position to put the city in and helped guide us to, and, um, and the, um, the stewardship you've had for financing. So I don't, I don't ever want to let an opportunity like this go by and just not recognize that then this wasn't just a lucky opportunity, but this is the fruit of careful stewardship and you were just really key to that, Director Regis.
Thank you.
Um, and then I have a question, but it may for Director Asher or Director Regis. I know that this item within more detail will come up on the next item, but could you just walk through again for folks what this bond is going to be covering, um, in terms of the infrastructure project?
Um, well, the 2000, well, the, the bond is refunding the 2012, um, A bonds, which is, was, uh, the 76th Street East Reconstruction Project. But then the second part is the 2013 B bonds, it's refunding that, wh- which was part of the stormwater, um, treatment plant that was built, um, over by Taft Lake that is now operating, you know, full force and everything like that. So, and it, it, and that was done in cooperation and conjunction with the Minnesota, uh, Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. And they had to approve this whole refunding, um, and they had a minimum threshold of 135,000 dollars. And so that's what we were aiming to, to, to accomplish is that. You'd say it will come out and help them though.
Thank you so much.
I would also just note that for the 2012 A, um, the city will continue to levy taxes to make those debt service payments as initially, um, done when the bonds were issued. For the B portion of that though, while legally, we have pledged stormwater revenues to that. Ultimately, through the agreement that you will consider, um, later this evening, those payments for that portion are being made from the Minnehaha Creek Watershed. So really, it is a pass through from the city perspective.
Thank you for making that clarification. Any other comments or questions from council members? No? All right. Um, so I think Councilmember Troutman, I sent you just a quick uh, note that we'll have, you'll have to make the motion again to reflect the updated amount, um, that is now in the report, but will be sent to us tomorrow. So if you could make that motion again, and then we'll move to the second. And you're still on mute, Councilmember Troutman? Okay, um, looks like we lost Councilmember Troutman.
Um, I would be willing to make a motion.
Go ahead.
So I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution awarding the sale of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020B, the original aggregate principal amount of fixing their form and specifications, correcting their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment, providing for the redemption of bonds refunded thereby.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Whalen with the adjusted amount, um, to reflect the correct amount that will be sent to council tomorrow. Um, and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez? Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. Thank you so much for coming and, um, presenting to us. The next item goes to Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item is to consider the approval of Second Amendment to the Cooperative Agreement between the City of Richfield and the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District with regards to the Legion Taft slash Taft Lake Improvement Project. Um, so we were just discussing this, the October 9th, 2012 City Council Meeting. The City Council approved a cooperative agreement between the City of Richfield and the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, or MCWD. At the February 26th, 2013 City Council Meeting, the Council approved the sale of the $2,770,000 general obligation stormwater revenue bonds, Series 2013B. The bonds were sold as part of the cooperative agreement to fund the Legion Taft Lake Improvement Project. As part of the cooperative agreement, MCWD made payments to the city to cover the annual debt service costs of the Series 2013B bonds. At the September 22nd, 2020, and October 27th, 2020 City Council Meeting, staff brought before the City Council the proposal to refund the Series 2013B bonds with the now $3,110,000 general obligation refunding bond, Series 2020B. With the refunding of the original Series 2013B bonds, the cooperative agreement will need to be amended to reflect the new debt service schedule. Um, and I know we've already discussed this a bit. Does staff have any more to add?
Um, I do have, have an updated debt service schedule. If the council would like to see it, I'll try to share that out on the screen because that's really, really the biggest change to the, uh, the, uh, the amended agreement and things like that. I'll try to, um,
Sure, thank you.
Try to share that if I can. Now, it's, oh, no, it's not, uh, not letting me share it. I have it up. Pardon me here. Here we go. There, can you all see that?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
That is, I'll try to make that a little smaller. So that is the new debt service schedule for, um, the 2020B bonds related to the, um, the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District agreement and the, and that, that ship portion of those bonds and stuff like that. So it's, uh, you know, 136,000 dollars savings for the district and for the city. Um, because if something should happen, um, the city is ultimately liable for the debt service on these bonds, but right now I don't think, you know, hopefully that won't happen and then Watershed District can continue to make the payments on the bonds, the, the pass through to us, so. And that's about, I think, and that's really the biggest change to the agreement, so.
Okay, thank you, Director Regis. With that, I will make the motion to approve the execution of a Second Amendment to the Cooperative Agreement between the City of Richfield and the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District with respect to the Legion Taft Lake Improvement Project.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Whalen and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Are there any comments or questions on this item from council members? Councilmember Supple?
Um, I just want to say thank you again to all of the staff for both this item and the last item. I know it's very complex and it's men many years of thinking ahead and planning ahead and prudent budgeting that made it possible. And I'm really, um, like I said earlier, concerned about the water quality. And I think that this is another example of ways we're trying to be good stewards of that. So kudos to all the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Other comments or questions? All right, Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The item has been approved. Thank you, everyone. The next item is the City Manager's Report with City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, COVID cases are on the rise again in Minnesota. And that's true locally as well. We've got some new data from, um, Bloomington Public Health recently on our local area. And one third of positive people worked in, in person while they were infectious. So the city has responded in a number of ways. And one of the biggest things that is, would, will the public is that we've had to move back to Dropbox only for motor vehicle services. And we're going to be closed for in-person from, uh, today and then through the week of the November 9th. So until November 16th, we'll open back up again. We were always going to be closed that week of November 9th because we are transitioning to the new state software system. Um, and it's unfortunate, just couldn't safely handle both operations. As of, uh, this morning, we had, uh, or no, I'm sorry, as of, uh, this evening, we had about 4,700 voters cast their early vote ballots, either in the Dropbox or in person. And today alone, we had 328 people come through. And we just, again, we just can't do it safely and have do both operations. Um, we, we have closed motor vehicles though. We absolutely are able to process voters, so take them and in. Um, we're encouraging our staff to uh, we use this as cases had dropped over the summer. And we're also asking staff, of course, to be, to wear their masks while sick. Also, uh, um, will not, we will not provide in-person service to if they're not going to wear a mask with very limited exceptions. And then, um, and I, I don't know if you want me to pause for any questions on that, and then I have some happier news.
Questions or comments on the City Manager Report so far?
I just want to give a huge thank you. This was going to be in my hats off, but I will do it now. Huge thank you to our city clerk, Beth Vanderhoos, um, and all of her staff in the Depreg Department that are, um, transitioning from one complex system to another in very, uh, short amount of time and learning all that it takes to make that transition happen while, you know, having the department open. And I know people's patience have been wearing thin around COVID. And, um, I know that while many people are grateful for the, the great work that her staff has done in welcoming, welcoming them and helping them navigate, um, getting to what they need to do for the city. Um, they've also had to, you know, be on, on the receiving end of people's thin patience, which is, which is not right, but I know that that's something that has impacted them. And then we have an unprecedented election year, um, because of COVID and because of everything happening in our country. So they are just doing so much to lead. So I just want to give them a huge thank you for all the hard work.
Oh, City Manager Rodriguez, I'm wondering if, I think we just lost her. Okay.
I'm sorry, my internet has frozen again.
Not a problem. We can hear you, it sounds like.
Okay. Um, on a happier note, uh, we have all not stopped smiling about the news that Richfield's received $6 million in the recently passed and signed bonding bill. There is such a long list of people to thank. Uh, we're up to 35 plus. Thank you, glad. I'm particularly grateful for all of this. Our legislators, uh, particularly Representative Howard and Senator Wicklund. And Commissioner, um, Debbie Gattal, who, uh, was very helpful in having us lobby for this. Public Works Director Asher was just good and demonstrated such leadership on this. Um, and finally, I of course came in for the last two years, but there's a lot of other people to thank. Do you want to thank my predecessor, Steve Devich, who worked so many years on this? So, uh, I'll end on a positive note.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. Yes, that's absolutely a huge win for our community for the revitalization of the east side, opening up that east side and connecting it, um, getting, you know, local traffic off of 494. And, uh, you know, helping with the smooth transition as we reduce the number of exits on 494. Um, that, that underpass is tremendous for our whole community, for the region and for the state. So thank you to everybody who helped. It was over 20 years in the making and fighting for, for that project. Um, and I am so proud to be a part of that. And, and thank you to everyone who has been a part of it. All right, we'll go to hats off, or actually, sorry, we have claims and payroll. All right, how about Councilmember Whalen, claims and payroll?
Um, I will move to approve claims and payroll.
Councilmember Troutman, second.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved by Councilmember Whalen and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been approved. Um, hats off. I will start with Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, this weekend, I happened to be taking a walk at Woodlake Nature Center when the half haunted Halloween was going on. And it looked like a lot of people were having a lot of fun. So thank you to everybody involved with that. But also, as I was walking around the park, I noticed some of the forest restoration projects that were going on and the prairie management things. And it was just really cool seeing all the stuff that was being done to help preserve and, um, the ecosystems and restore, um, the different ecosystems at Woodlake Nature Center. So thank you so much for that. And also I do want to, um, say thank you for everyone involved with the underpass. say thank you for everyone involved with the underpass. And also, along with that same legislation, there was a lot of funding for housing. So it was good on a number of different fronts. So thank you to everybody involved in that. And I just want to echo whatever Rym has said to encourage people to get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. Those are exactly my two hats off, both for the friends of Woodlake and the fellow members that had a great Half Haunted Halloween that was socially distant, but still gave kids some, an opportunity to have some fun outside. So hats off to Director Markle and our Woodlake team. And of course, hats off to the dozens of people that made the funding for the underpass forward or possible. And particularly, there are a lot of people to thank. The one other person I wanted to thank is our Transportation Director, Margaret Anderson-Kelleher, and in her office, who really, I think, came to see funding that underpass as an equity issue and as an opportunity for the Department of Transportation to invest in making sure that the east side and that southeast corner of Richfield continues to thrive and develop and grow and not to close it off. So lots of, lots of thank yous, but I just wanted to take that hats off also.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing terribly new to add, but some more detail around voting. Just want to encourage people, if you already voted by mail, check, if you haven't yet, check the tracker. Make sure it was received and accepted. You can, the Secretary of State's got a spot. You can track that. The shortcut is mnvotes.org/trac. If you are still planning to vote early in person or vote in person on Election Day, please get your plan together. Reach out to any one of us if you've got questions, or probably your best bet even is to reach out to Beth Vanderhoos, our city clerk, who is awesome and happy to help any voters with questions or any other needs that you have. So yeah, that's all I have. Make sure your votes counted.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Let's see here. I did want to share that instead of our annual wine tasting event for the Richfield Foundation, we will be doing an online fundraiser. And the Richfield Foundation will be highlighting a, each day between November 15 and November 19, they'll have a special theme each of those days. They'll be showcasing artists, they'll be showcasing different businesses throughout the community, organizations, and they'll be on an online auction. So again, as a reminder, the Richfield Foundation is the nonprofit organization that really is the hub for collecting resources, money, volunteer support for our local Richfield organizations, doing exceptional work in our own backyard. And, you know, this year is extremely important because of all the difficulties our families are facing in Richfield because of COVID. So please go to the Richfield Foundation website online. Donate if you have, if you're, if you're just a resident and you want to donate something for the auction, donate. Or if you want to donate something from your business, please do in support the tremendous work of the foundation and all the organizations that they support. And then lastly, I just have a couple highlights on the city side. Our, you know, city staff have been doing an exceptional job of finding ways to reach out and adapt, reach out to our residents, figure out what the needs are of our residents in the middle of COVID and the difficulties that everyone is facing, and have done such a great job adapting. So a couple examples of that is we had a great, a great presentation by MIRA and our city staff around reaching out and better understanding the needs and interests of our Spanish-speaking community members. And they'll be moving forward with implementing work around equity based on those surveys, and we've had a strengthened, strengthening our partnership with MIRA. But also, we had a successful wrap-up of the Park Ambassador Program, which our Parks and Recreation Department pivoted in COVID, knowing that folks were going out and using our parks more. And this ambassador program was really focused on educating folks around COVID, around picking up, doing some maintenance to keep our parks looking great, engaging with residents, connecting with them, promoting our parks and recreation programs and services and facilities, and then asking how folks are using our parks. So taking COVID as an opportunity to pivot and still connect and reach our families. And there were some really great statistics with 645 hours logged, over 1,000 park visits were logged, and the most common activities being dog walking, exercising, playing with family, and just relaxing. And then lastly, one thing, well, actually, two other things. We do have our dog park ribbon cutting on November 5 at 4:30 PM in Roosevelt Park. Please come, bring your dogs, and come celebrate the ribbon cutting with us. And I was really impressed to read in our city manager report that the council receives that our staff went to Richfield Towers and delivered 150 CARES kits, really focused on supplies for COVID, disinfectant wipes, hand sanitizers, masks. So again, connecting with our most vulnerable residents. They did deliver 200 CARES kits to families that are participating at our Kids at Home program. So again, another great example of our staff pivoting, continuing to do community outreach and connecting to make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our residents. And that is all I have. So with that, I will adjourn our meeting and see you all at the next meeting. Thank you, everyone.